And you can turn it off.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to this evening's board meeting. I'll call this meeting to order and we'll first establish that we have a quorum, beginning with a roll call vote. Joe?
Here.
Corby?
Here.
John?
Here.
Christopher?
Here.
Juan Carlos?
Here.
I am here as well. We do have a quorum. Corby, has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, ma'am.
Wonderful. To help ensure that we're centering our board work around our shared values and serving our students, we begin each of our board meetings by reading our district's equity framework and the Ho-Chunk Land Acknowledgement, which can be found at the top of tonight's agenda. And I am up in our rotation, so I will take the honor of reading this evening. Our educational equity framework reads, "In the Verona Area School District, our mission is that each student will acquire the knowledge and skills necessary to achieve their personal goals, thrive in a diverse global society, and lead a healthy, self-fulfilling life. To meet this mission, the Verona Area School District will ensure that every individual has access to the educational, social, and emotional support they need to feel valued and affirmed in their unique identities and experiences. We acknowledge that inequities and power dynamics exist in our system, such that some individuals, on the basis of their identities, face barriers to accessing the opportunities they need to experience success. In acknowledgement of such, the Verona Area School District is committed to disrupting these systems of inequity." And our Ho-Chunk Land Acknowledgement reads, "There are currently 12 tribal nations who call Wisconsin home, with the Ho-Chunk Nation being the primary group living around Madison. No matter where you are in the state, you are on the ancestral land of a tribal nation. As we begin our meeting, we honor the land upon which we stand." Board members, I invite you to take a look at the remainder of tonight's agenda. There are no questions or amendments. I would accept a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Motion's approved.
Thank you, Christopher. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of approving tonight's agenda signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved. We get to move into some recognitions. Always a great way to start our meetings. Some student recognitions to start with. Dr. Clarity, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you so much, and good evening, everyone. We'll begin with our student recognitions, and I just wanted to take an opportunity to really thoroughly congratulate the students, the staff, and the multiple volunteers that helped bring the Hades Talent Teen Edition to life last Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. And honestly say, when I've been in education over a quarter century, been to dozens of musicals, and this was, you know, just the most phenomenal performance I've seen. I'm not sure if anyone in our crowd or anyone here was able to see it. It was one of the stories, not spoiler, but it's kind of like, you know the story, you know the end, and you kind of hope it doesn't go that way, and it does. But when you saw the crowd react so emotionally to each of the performances and the individual songs, and just leaving the space with, you know, probably feeling emotionally drained because of the performance of our students, that really shows how much work is put into bringing this to life. Behind the scenes, we know there were hundreds of people that support building the stage, lighting, casting, hours and hours and hours of practice, music on the stage, music behind the scenes. So everything that you could want in a high school performance came to life. And so on behalf of our district, we just like to thank so many people that were involved in bringing this great performance to life. And I just want to say thank you to hopefully listening or just the acknowledgement.
Yeah, thank you.
Also, last week, we had the opportunity to celebrate our new National Honor Society inductees. At that time, we had 171 students who were inducted into the National Society for the Verona Area. These students are demonstrating strong academic performance and commitment to the four National Honor Society pillars: scholarship, service, leadership, and character. So I just wanted to extend an additional congratulations to our inductees and their families, who we know are so instrumental in guiding them along the way on their journey. This was the induction of our juniors, who we know will carry that out throughout the year and into their senior year as well. And also thank you to our current seniors, who are continuing to lead the way.
Wonderful.
Quickly, do a little name recognition as you scroll there. And it's always good not to be able to do this on one screen.
Let's do it.
All right. Next, we'd like to move into staff recognition. And here today, we would like to honor Angie Muthun Henson, who has joined us here today. Also, I got the honor meeting with her earlier today around 2 o'clock, as she brought two of our scholars over to practice their FFA presentation. So performed of duty, but also just shows the deep attention to detail and her commitment to servicing and supporting our students, and was able to listen to the presentations, to give some feedback before they go to the national competition in Indianapolis in one week or two weeks?
Next week.
Next week, Wednesday. So really excited for those students there. I don't want to spoil what they're going to talk about, but if you get a chance to hear their presentation, maybe we'll have them come in and do one at a later time and listen to it. It really speaks to the heart, and it speaks about the continued work to alleviate school violence across our country and locally. And they just mastered the content, but also it was a heartfelt presentation. So thank you for that. That's actually not the board. It's the board that we're doing today. We'd like to congratulate the dynamic duo of agriculture teachers at VHS, who won the Voya Unsunken Award. We recognized Jamie Morris earlier when she won awards for special nights, and tonight we're recognizing Angie, who is also a recipient. They are the only winners in the entire state of Wisconsin and are one of only 50 winning submissions to receive the award to help fund and bring their program to life. The project incorporates sheep into gardening to promote agricultural literacy at VHS and in the surrounding community. Students will learn the science of plant production and the benefits of adding wool to soil, as well as career skills in animal care, gardening, and marketing. We'd like to take congratulations to the team, who is now in the competition for one of the top three national awards. So congratulations to you and the continued work beyond FFA and beyond, but your amazing work around the agricultural department altogether. Thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you, Angie. It's exciting to be able to honor just a moment in time to really honor the legacy that you've brought to this district for, I say a long time in a really polite way. I hope that will sound that way. But truly, the reputation of the FFA program here has been longstanding as long as I've been a part of the district. And I am so grateful for all the work that you do, that that can stay something so vibrant in our district, when there are so many things that might potentially take away or sway from a program like yours. Thank you for all that you do. If there's anything else you want to add, as long as you're here, we'll certainly open it up to you, but no pressure to share. We're excited to have you here.
Well, thank you for acknowledging the work that Jamie and I do. Definitely a team effort. Thank you for watching the presentations today. I'm very proud. It's kind of once in a career to get to have kids be top 10 in the nation for a project that they were passionate about. And I wanted to share that I got some of the arrangements of the kids meet today, just to give you guys a little taste of what we sent over to our neighboring school after that unfortunate incident. Thank you for your continued support. We appreciate you.
Thank you. Congratulations again.
Thank you.
And we will, we have one more recognition? In the century?
Couple more.
Okay, just making sure.
So next, I would like to... Where my slide go?
I think it's one. Yeah.
I'd like to take the opportunity to recognize, and this is our first time doing it in this matter. We can legitimately say it's a viral moment that occurred in New Century School. At your own pace, and probably after the meeting, please go ahead and watch the video. If you play it here, it throws off the rest of the technology, and we want to make sure that, we want to continue to move, but please watch the clip. I can just give a description of what you're going to witness, and then I'll go through the numbers in terms of views. So what's happening in the clip is Dr. Hollenberry's fourth grade music class in New Century. Students were practicing keeping the beat in their bodies while having fun. Dr. Hollenberry believes it is important for music students to learn concepts through a variety of methods, including kinesthetic movement, lessons such as hoop, jumping on the beat, or stepped, or steeped in the practices, dog rolls. Got it? There you go. Dog rolls, erhythms, and the only reason I knew you were rhythmic is because of the group, Sweet Dreams.
Yeah, yeah.
Method of music presentation, they believe strongly in connecting bodily movement to the understanding of the intellectual concepts. For having the students understand and feel the beats within a time signature, it ultimately improves their instrumental and vocal ensemble as a whole. Dr. Hollenberry has witnessed this improvement already this year as NCS students listen and work with each other in their percussion playing. We often say that the magic happens in the classroom, and this explanation opens the curtain to what is behind the magic and the expertise, knowledge, and skills of educators to translate theoretical knowledge into engaging lessons and learning activities. So, once this clip was submitted, as of us posting or printing the numbers, it was 3,173,888 views, over 1,000 comments, 5,581 shares, and 13,058 saves. So it's truly a viral moment and representation from New Century, and we're very proud of Dr. Hollenberry and the work that she continues to do in her fourth grade class. So congratulations to NCS and Dr. Hollenberry's fourth grade class.
Thank you. Continue into the superintendent's report, and just note, board members, we have a lot that lives in the superintendent's report that then feeds into votes later. But as we typically do, leaving space for public comment in between goes right for a lot of the topics that we carry, but we'll just kind of keep things as is with that. So welcoming our... What? Oh, and we're celebrating something else. It's right in front of me, and I'm all talking about the agenda.
That's all right. Final, well, everything we do tonight's celebration in some sense or another, but our next celebration would be just our overall ratings, which is by NESH. And NESH is the statewide or nationwide, excuse me, reporting system of performance for districts across the nation. And so in the Verona School District, we recently learned that we rated in the top three in Dane County in the following areas: Best Places to Teach, Most Diverse School District, Best School District, and Best School District for Athletes. The rankings were released by NESH, a company that provides an educational institution information, ranks and reviews. Ratings are based on federal data, state data, and user-generated reviews. The Verona School District continues to be at the top, number 14 spot of all districts across the state of Wisconsin, and we look forward to continuing to grow. So congratulations to our amazing staff, our students, and our families, and our board that comprises the Verona Area School District. And it's always a great day to be able to celebrate the accomplishments as we continue to be a desirable district for families and students.
That's awesome. We'd almost skip that slide, President Jen Murphy. Thank you. Shifting over to, welcome Chad Wheezy.
Hey, guys.
The next round of presentations.
And I brought my friend Dave back.
Welcome, Dave. Good to see you again.
We skipped right by, because we were so excited to talk about doing our part to save the planet. So we're back tonight for a really brief update on the solar project that I think we brought to you probably two months ago now. And got, I think for the most part, 100% thumbs up and endorsement from the school board about being excited about this possibility. As promised, we've continued to work and plan behind the scenes with our friends from Sustain Verona. And are really back here tonight just to do a brief update in terms of where we're at, some of the work that we've done. And more than anything, Dave here and his group, the rubber's kind of hitting the road on the fundraising trail. You may have seen some letters to the editor. They've started to put together some polished materials to take it after this. And in general, we're looking for an official endorsement from the school board tonight that if and when those funds are raised, that we publicly said, "We're in, and we're going to match those funds." And I think that's an important key component to sustain Verona going out and looking for private donations, knowing that there's a one-for-one match from our school district. So we're just going to do a real brief update, see if the board had any closing questions. And then, Jen, a little bit later, you guys have a vote to endorse it. Up to you, if you want to pull it out of the agenda, we'll plug with Dave here, or we can just wait till the board action.
Sounds terrific.
So again, our partners in this, and certainly going to turn things over to Dave, Sustain Verona, an upstart group, I think that was, in some regard, your brainchild, mirroring a project that took place in Sauk Prairie School District, where a similar community-based organization, who cared about public schools and cared about the environment, decided to take this on, and we're certainly grateful for that. Dave, I don't know, you wanted to even mention, I think, some of the great progress we've made with the Education Foundation and the ways we're helping their assisting you guys take donations.
Sure. We want to just thank the Verona Education Foundation for their cooperation and help with this. Sustain Verona is not a 501(c)(3) charitable organization, and since we're relatively new, we did not want to try to raise the money for people to give to us to then give to the school. We just thought there might be a bit of, you know, who are these guys? But the Verona Area Education Foundation's been around for decades, I think. The only problem is they've never raised this kind of money that we're talking about. We're talking about $250,000, and they're more used to maybe $2,000. So they hit the up their game, and we've worked a lot with them, with Marcy, and John Borleski, and Nick Graves. We appreciate the help that they've gotten in terms of, I think they got a new bank account. They're hiring an accountant, that kind of stuff, that we had to do as baseline. We've also started fundraising, and I'm happy to say we've already got $32,000 of the $250,000 raised. And that's without really even having much of a public campaign yet. We expect that between now and the first of the year or Christmas time, we're really going to get much more vocal. We hope you'll see yard signs and a brochure, and maybe you'll get emails about it, and read stuff in the paper, all of that kind of stuff. So we're asking people to donate money individually. That includes everybody up here in front of us. $500 will get your name, or your kid's name, or your mother's name, or whoever's name you want on a panel. If you give us $50,000, you're a platinum donor, and you get a big plaque down somewhere in the school hallway. We're going to have a donor wall. We hope that will commemorate all the people that have given money. The other thing we're looking for, and Chad has been gracious about this too, is that if we can get up to about $100,000, which we're hoping to do by Christmas time, they'll go ahead and issue an RFP and get a signed contract, which really makes the project real. At that point, we've got a contractor, we've got a specific plan. That will make us eligible for a couple of grants. People can grant you the money until you actually have a project in hand. And the grants could bring us as much as another $40,000. And the faster we get this done, the federal government may still give us a rebate. Chad has hired a consultant who tells us if we can get it started by July 4th or July 1st of this coming year, we're likely to be eligible for about a 30% rebate, which would be $150,000 of the $500,000 program. So we may get as much as $200,000 back in terms of grants and rebates. So that makes fundraising a lot easier, too. And if we have too much money, maybe you'll do what Sauk Prairie did, which is put solar panels on a second school. They had so much money left over, they decided to do it on an elementary school in addition.
It'd be a good problem to have.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
So Dave did a great job, I think, kind of summarizing the remaining slides. Again, there's long-term savings here, that the school district portion of this investment would pay itself back in five years. And over the life of the solar array, we end up saving on $1.4 million in total costs to the district. We reduce our environmental impact by 200 tons of carbon a year, and certainly there's educational value. One of the things why I should write into the RFP was kind of the analytics side, where our science classrooms in particular, maybe some math, maybe some engineering classes, will have access to real-life data in terms of what those solar arrays are producing and what they're offsetting, which will be great. Again, we did want to show you the footprint of kind of where it would go. We just had Angie here. It would go right over the top of the AIG and the auto department kind of in our tech wing in the high school. That would be phase one, that we've kind of got marked out, and we've done a little initial analyzation of making sure that that works, and it does. Again, our agreement for the board vote tonight would be $250,000. There's a couple of moving pieces here, that if Sustain Verona is really good with raising funds, let's say by the first of the year, we can put an RFP out, and they continue to raise funds. But all of a sudden, the solar consultant we're working with, like you guys are in, you checked all the boxes for a 30% rebate from the federal government, then there's the possibility of actually their group and the district not having to go all in at $250,000 a piece. And we're just going to feel our way out, I'm feeling, in the spring in terms of where they're at with benchmarks and the fundraising efforts. And if they're churning ahead and have a couple major donors, and get all the way to $250,000, it's a wonderful problem to have. We can still apply for the federal rebate. We can either put a bigger array on the high school, or to Dave's point, potentially even explore another site. We've got new rows on a couple of schools that we can maybe kind of go into in a second direction. So that's kind of where we're at. Dave mentioned that there's a marketing team from Sustain Verona that started to produce materials, yard signs, and is contacting local community organizations to speak to. And really, I think, following tonight, it's full steam ahead for us to do this project if we continue to have the school board's endorsement. Dave did mention the tax credit and a couple of the grants. So there is the possibility of nearly $200,000 of savings. The clock's ticking a little bit on that federal rebate. And that's part of the reason I talked to Dr. Clarity and Jen about getting on the agenda tonight, just so we can get pushed off to see and get fundraising going, because we kind of need to get that money accumulated to get an RFP and meet the deadline for the federal. So with that said, our next steps on this, we're hoping tonight the board would endorse up to a $250,000 commitment out of this year's budget that would come from our facilities maintenance budget. So we don't need to do a budget amendment to do so. We would be working on an RFP and update the school board. That would likely be sometime after the first of the year, that we would potentially put that on the street and give you timely updates, either through periodic emails, or even after the first of the year, a brief five-minute update like you're getting tonight. Fundraising will continue, and grant writing will start once we have the go-ahead. We're here to answer questions if you guys have any.
When's the deadline, the federal deadline?
Well, Juan Carlos, it's wonderful that this still exists. And I think Dave can pick up my cynical frustration in some of our meetings. There is, with every kind of gait, the federal government's making these rebates harder and harder. So there was the possibility, if I think, up to a 40% rebate as of the first of the year, if we had cash in hand. As of July 4th, there's a 30% rebate, but it comes with more red tape. And the red tape literally is, where are the parts of the inverter coming from? And if they're coming from the wrong country, in a proportion, you may not qualify for the bigger portion of the rebates. We'll actually turn that over to industry experts, and in the RFP, say, "We expect you to be qualified to help us tease apart all of the ins and outs of that grant, to tell us if it came from Malaysia, Vietnam, or the United States in terms of where the inverter being produced." So that's really what's going on, and I think if we miss the July 4th deadline, there's still opportunities for some federal dollars. They might shrink, and it might come with more red tape. And that's kind of what we're hearing from our council.
I mean, it's a lot, and I think they're doing the auto interest deduction that they're offering.
100%, so it's locked shut. Yep. Other questions or comments?
I understand it's not guaranteed, and that there's a lot of red tape to come with it. But a 30% rebate seems great.
Yeah.
Is there any consideration of increasing the scope of the project if we're getting that kind of rebate back?
And that would likely be, we would, we'd come back to the school board. If this is going getting busters, and Sustain Verona's had, let's say, an easy time of getting to that benchmark of $250,000, certainly. I think once you get the infrastructure on the roof, and the actual adding of extra solar panels, we have the roof space to make our array bigger. And this is just a very small portion of the electricity it takes to run this giant plant every day. So even if we filled up every square foot of our roof space here, this high school would still not be carbon neutral by any means. So I think it would be a good problem to have if we get there. Other questions?
And just a reminder to the community that the reason we're even at this point in the conversation is the last time you presented, there was strong interest from board members, knowing the potential investment that we were going to make as a district. So this number that we're talking about, this presentation, is a revisit, because we certainly had the excitement going into the last presentation about where the direction could go. So appreciating the chance that this is our formal vote then, as board members, to really give that blessing for our contribution budgetarily. But this was something that we kind of gave the nod to, to get to this point even.
We're particularly interested, we're mostly a Verona organization, and, you know, half of the school district, a part of the school district, is in Pittsburgh. Those of you, I don't know who represents Pittsburgh. If you can talk to constituents there and get us some contacts, some people we can talk to, you know, that's another whole avenue of places to raise money and stuff, so.
We're excited and obviously very grateful, and I want to thank the Sustain Verona bunch for doing this. Really out of the kindness of their heart, because they care about the school district and care about the planet. It's pretty cool.
The Great Lakes were just announced to be the warmest ever. They're five degrees over their highest, their normal temperature right now. And I think, you know, every year, we're just getting reports about the planet is heating up in many ways, more and more and more, so. I don't think it's frozen yet here in Wisconsin. Maybe, unless you had a little bit of freeze last night, it's just very unusual not to have a frost by Halloween.
Right.
That's another sign.
I think it's important to stress, too, that in addition to the environmental benefits of doing this, which are great and wonderful, and that would be reason enough to do it, but the return on investment here, I mean, Chad mentioned this, this will save over the life of these, you know, next 25 years, $1.4 million. That's a degree of savings that for a $250,000 investment, I think it would be financially irresponsible of us to not do it.
With data centers, electricity costs are going up and up and up. So the savings could actually be more than that if the electricity rates continue to rise.
The point I was going to make is this stabilizes the cost that you're paying for electricity. We have solar in our house as well, and we live in Seattle, so we're big on this family. I'm happy to help make connections in Pittsburgh.
And then just to, once this is all set up, the perfect system is that charging facility for cars and vehicles, but we'll get that cross out.
Let's get these on the road first.
I'm excited about the student impact. I think it's amazing that students will get to be in this space and actually have some relevant, hands-on content to grasp, what it is that we're talking about. What does it mean to create a sustainable way of existence?
I think in the end, that will be the biggest difference.
I completely agree.
If we do a better job graduating earth-friendly, carbon-conscious graduates.
Data analytical, all of it.
Those are the ones that are going to make the biggest difference.
Yeah, yeah, agreed.
The amount of carbon we'll save is great, but turnout, 500 kids who care about the environment every year, that's the most important thing.
Yeah. Well, I know I prefaced this entire superintendent's report by saying, "We want to get all the information," and then provide space for public comment. We also have Dave and others here that maybe don't need to listen to all of our board meetings, though we are more than welcome. But I do want to make sure, if there is any public comment specific to this project, I'm not aware of any public comment yet this evening, but I do want to make sure that we preserve that space. Board members on the fly, are we okay then moving toward our votes? We can be respectful of time and guests this evening?
Yes.
Okay. Any further questions or discussion? All right, so then I will open it up for a motion, there's the word, to provide up to $250,000 to $250,000 in matching funds as presented to support the Sustain Verona solar panel project.
Motion to approve?
Thank you, Christopher, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Joe, that was close. All those in favor of approving the $250,000 match in funds as presented for the solar panel project, please signify with a aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion is approved onward to grant some fundraising, and do let us know how we can be of support.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chad.
And we will bring up Pete.
Yes.
I know we've got a full agenda tonight, and I know some of this is review, we do have some big pieces that finally fell into place here late last week, Pete in particular, along with myself. It is a busy time on Wednesday when all the final numbers get posted and all of this has to fall into place, so we can bring it to you tonight, it's like a Christmas day. It is, right? A year of talking about it and speculating, eight estimates, it all comes together and we finally get the real numbers. So here we are tonight, so we're going to put the finishing pieces on this budget and ask for the board to approve it and officially endorse it, so we can be on, November we'll likely be back already talking about '26, '27. So we'll review what guided this budget, we are going to do an enrollment update, and we have a little more detail than we've had to the board in the past, fully expect some questions there. We've got our finalized state aid, we do have equalized fair market values that did impact what we ended up with mill rate, we're going to review what we're going to do with capital debt, but that for the most part stayed the same from the annual meeting, and we brought to you tonight a little bit of new learning for the board, because this is becoming a bigger and bigger issue statewide and even locally, and that's voucher schools. And then finally, we've got a recommendation for all of you regarding where we believe that levy in the mill rate should end up, but that's not official until all of you vote on it. So again, we're here tonight to continue to play that balancing act of impact on taxpayers, but make sure that we're, we have the resources to run our school district, pay our hardworking staff, and keep the lights on. And that is a constant balancing act, and it gets more and more difficult every year. And we see this in terms of our budget really working in, you know, COGS and a big machine that eventually will kick out that levy tonight. So we did want to prioritize what's going on with tax impact, we still have long-range, purposeful capital planning, and that happens again. We continue to adjust the mill rate, this year we had a goal of keeping that under the rate of inflation, and we did so. And the tools we use are net new construction, really, and equalized property value. I'm going to pause here on the bottom, we didn't do a specific slide relative to state aid, but we informed the board at the annual meeting, there's no new money in the state aid pot, it's the exact same money it was the year before. WASBO just published today that 71% of the school districts in the state of Wisconsin are receiving less aid than they did the year before. And we are one of those school districts, and really it comes down to how many students you have, how much your property value is worth, and the fact that the aid pot didn't increase. Milwaukee schools in particular, that passed referendum, took a bigger chunk of that aid pot, and a lot of people felt that in terms of managing that on the back end. So that is a big deal. And we didn't get into a ton of detail on state aid, but in our school district, the fallout from that is, because we levy extra in Fund 39, every penny we do not get in state aid is money we can't put towards paying down capital debt, saving money in interest down the road, and providing a cushion or soft landing if we ever did need to go back to operating referendum in the future. So aid is a big deal in our school district, and we took a hit this year, just like everybody else. So our goals again, manage taxes, take care of the people that are serving our students, manage debt, align our staffing with what's going on with enrollment, and in the end, pass a balanced budget, and that's what we're presenting to the board tonight. The pieces that we were waiting for, property value, we're going to give you an update on what happened with aid, what happened with enrollment, and what we wanted to do with Fund 39. And we're going to spend a little bit more time on enrollment, which is incredibly complicated. We're here to answer questions if you have them. There are really three main pieces that all have interplay here in terms of where we end up with what we hand into the state for revenue authority. And they go in kind of this order. Head count is actually how many students we have in seats in our school district, but that is not, it's not that exact head count we end up handing into the state of Wisconsin for revenue authority. Head count in the end helps inform membership, and membership would be any eligible student that lives within the boundaries of our school district, that the state really has, uses that number to help us calculate what we end up getting for revenue permission. And that membership is then turned into something called FTE, which really is a full-time enrollee in our school district. Those terms can be interchangeable with an employee, sometimes we'll say FTE for a full-time adult. Here we're talking about students, the equivalent of a full-time student. And there is a ratio we use in terms of that membership. And here is kind of the leading story on where we're at with enrollment, and I know Dr. Clarity might have a thing or two to say about this as well. In the end, after we got done with third Friday count, I think the board can see, in particular, our elementary schools are much smaller than they've been, at least in short history, let's say the last five or six years, and we ended up with 51 fewer students in 4K and 45 fewer students in kindergarten. So that's almost 100 students right there. In the end, in terms of pupils in seats, our school district's down 150 students. And we are not alone. We've got a few other things to show you in terms of birth rate around the state is very common, way more common than that for school districts to encounter declining enrollment. It's been uncommon for us. And there are some things we can do on the back end as far as filling seats with open enrollment and so forth, and I think, you know, we just had a meeting with city planners this morning, growth is still continuing in our school district. I do not expect us to become a permanently declining enrollment school district, but we do have a bubble of people having fewer students that they're sending to our schools at the lower grade levels. I'm going to pause on that slide and just see if anyone has questions on the third Friday count or anything else going on. And then Dr. Clarity, I don't know if this would be a good spot, if you've got other thoughts in terms of things you've heard from your colleagues.
All right, so, before we put the board questions first, then I'll jump in.
More so than questions, there's just a lot that we'll grapple with then here as we get to open enrollment discussions in January, and I mean, right, there's just so many ramifications of this information. So, you know, I appreciate the sentiments you shared as to maybe some backstory with the numbers, but I think I'm finding myself just, okay, so we've all this over, and when we have kind of domino decisions that will start to come forward, this is information that comes with all of that.
So I think that's going to be the biggest piece of it, thanks for the segue, perfect segue, Jen. Working with our colleagues across Dane County, this is an area where, as recently as the Friday superintendent's meeting, all of us really bounce ups in the same or similar circumstances, and especially the, it's the ability to appropriately calculate projected 4K and K numbers as a, has been an issue across the state, and particularly noticeable in Dane County, and I think we tried to get to some root causes, some of the factors contributing that. We do understand that, you know, we have basically competing districts where some have open enrollment, some that don't, I think that leads to a bigger conversation, as you stated before, in January, and the board makes a decision around, especially at the year-grades, maybe possibly all of the KD rate of what does open enrollment look like for a Verona school district. And it's just having the very conversation that, whether it's the combination of lower birth rates overall and lower birth rates would vary, I would say, higher to purchase, the mentality of just not having as many students per rooftops as was previously calculated. I think one thing that has been consistent, that number has been drastically low when you're trying to, in essence, take a calculated guess of how many families are going to bring children of school age into a new rooftop in Dane County, and making those decisions. And I think what we can all have learned from the last 12 months is that the number that we used projected in the past is drastically lower than it is, than it actually is. And learning from that, but also opens up a great opportunity for us to expand and look at open enrollment differently, because the fear was, at the time, overcrowding classrooms and increasing more needs for full-time employees, and I think our numbers are showing that's not, would not be a significant factor, so.
And historically, that has been the concern. I mean, I think this really is like this first glaring year where this is not the previous pattern. We've had hesitation about opening enrollment at kindergarten for as long as I can remember. So, I mean, I think this is, to just appreciate back to the reflection we had last January and the cautious nature that we approached having open seats at kindergarten, I think it just elevates that this is somewhat new.
And I would, Dr. C, there are what we would kind of consider sister school districts in Dane County who have bumped into the same thing, that they had the same conservative approach in regards to open enrollment, that have started to open up more slots, because they are also having more open seats because they're having lower numbers of students enrolling. Yep, so we're, we are certainly, you know, amongst friends in Dane County that are open.
And also, we showed the NISH report every year because we are very proud of the gains that we've made in the Verona school district, and it's all to do with our staff. Our staff are releasing that those gains happen, I never want to lose sight of that. And while you don't want to be in my setup, being competitive for kids in spaces we are, and that's just a fact that we are, so we do demonstrate that, show, you know, the value of a Verona school district education and put that information out there, because families have choices, and families, as each Dane County school opens their doors to open enrollment, there is, in essence, competition of where families can make a choice to go, and we want to continue to show and prioritize the value of what it means to get an education here, and what they'll, what our students will experience if they have the opportunity to engage with our staff. And so continue to celebrate that, uplift that, and make sure that it's accurate, what data is important, we celebrate, we celebrate that.
And just to be clear, enrollment is down for virtually all the schools in Dane County, correct?
Right.
And statewide. So like, I just want to caution against any narrative that it might look like our enrollment is declining because people are choosing to leave here to go elsewhere. That doesn't hold up because everywhere else is declining too. People are either not having kids at the rate we thought they were, or people are leaving the state at a rate different than what people expected, because this is happening across the world. We've got some interesting birth data that we'll share with the board here, coming up. Do your accurate.
You know, I hate to bring this back into the conversation, because I think we don't want to forget our experience, but we try to move away, but this is the force core of what children that would have been born during the COVID era and the pandemic, and we are just, that is a calculated piece that I think, as you'll see in the birth data, people just weren't having kids with the uncertainties of, you know, everything where our world was or society was. We have to look at that for the first time, because that age group is the group that is no longer showing up.
Yeah.
We have a few summary slides, I'm not going to belabor this point. In the end, the FTE calculation, the one Pete enters into the revenue limit worksheet that we submit to DPI. In the end, with the head count and the membership in terms of counting some students as whole students and others as 50 or 60%, we're down 60 FTE, reminder to the board, that is calculated into a three-year average. So that minus 60 doesn't hurt as much this year, because you need to average it into the other two school years, but it's going to be a little friend that lives with us for the next three years, that we don't get to kick off the other end of that three-year average until we have two more budget years, so it will be with us. And it does have an impact in terms of what we get to revenue permission.
And Jack, can you just put into space, say again, what FTE means, because there's a different way that staff look at it.
Yeah, so it is not, it is not staff, it's essentially a full-time student, it's the equivalent of a full-time student being handed into DPI. Yep, and they're interchangeable.
And the reason we use that is because 4K are calculated at, what, 40%?
15.
60%.
4K, summer school hours are in there as well.
Summer school's at 40%. Yep. They're all counted one.
So given that, because when we talk FTE as staffing, we also attach like an average dollar amount, four on 1.0, I don't know, Pete, if this is a far grab in your ability to pull numbers, but a negative 60 FTE, what does that mean from a state aid-ish perspective monetarily? Do you have any sort of just ballpark number of what that means?
Well, we do get, on our revenue limit formula, we are allowed about $16,000 per FTE.
Okay.
That's broken up between state aid and tax levy.
Okay.
So depending on how the aid formula looks and where we're at, we're that.
Okay.
So we, $16,000 a student.
Yep.
The main two sources of income related to that $16,000, property taxes and state aid.
Yep. Got it. That's helpful, to just put some context to what that might mean for us budgetarily. Thank you.
We did do a few summaries, so the board had access to some longitudinal data related to head count and FTE, and you can see we're still on a general increase related to both those things, but it's certainly not a straight line, there's some ups and some downs, this is certainly a down year. Transfer ins and outs, this is kind of a segue comment from President Murphy, I think we will have some more in-depth conversations around what we're doing with open enrollment near the first of the year, because that is, it is a thing we recommended to the board to be cautious on kindergarten, and did not see this small kindergarten class coming. And again, it's a little bit of a lottery. We did want to share with the board, and I do think this is interesting, one of the main pieces of data that are used both by market offers who put together that enrollment study, and anyone else who's trying to calculate how many students we're going to have in our school district in the coming years, they use Dane County birth rate data. So I had Pete pull this, it's a little bit of an ugly chart, but I did try to box in kind of the three years we're looking at for what we've gotten, kindergarten, 4K and first grade. And you can see in general, you wouldn't make the ADB assumption that we're going to be down a bunch of kids, that in the city of Verona in 2019, there were 256 births, if they all stayed here, we'd get everyone, most of those students would come to our school district. And you can see, that's virtually average or above average in terms of babies being had in the city of Verona. And you can see next year, 2021, was a record year for babies in the city of Verona. Do we have any way of knowing if all 291 are enrolling in kindergarten? Absolutely not. They could have moved out of the county the day after they were born, but it is a data point that we have that we can watch. The other thing that I wanted to just kind of highlight, and this was to Joe's point, it is interesting, if you take a look at the top row there, take a look at what's happening with birth rates just in the state of Wisconsin. So 10 years ago, you had 108,000 births, in 2023, you had 96,000 births, so that's down 12, 13%. And that has a direct impact on students heading into kindergarten, kind of on a five-year rolling average. So it is going down statewide, I think we're a little more immune to it here, because we have so much in the housing. But if we were in a kind of a landlocked school district, you're feeling that declining enrollment on a yearly basis. Any other questions on enrollment? But we wanted to give you a little bit more detail tonight, because it was an anomaly of a year with us having our enrollment shrink. We'll also lead to some interesting discussions when we get to staffing time, because we had to make sure we right-size our staff related to how many students we've got, and we're being fiscally responsible. All right, a few more odds and ends from the budget, the board's very familiar with this slide, in the end, our debt defeesance amount that we're recommending to all of you is just short of $6 million for this year. You'll have a vote sometime likely in the spring to carry through that defeesance. And again, we've saved $11 million in interest by doing this work and have continued to use it as a tool to manage mill rate, I wanted to make sure we called that out. We did put this together, what changed in terms of where we were at with the annual meeting, in terms of real numbers. Did want to give a big shout out to our guy Pete, who is a leader in the state of Wisconsin in terms of aid calculations. in terms of aid calculations and estimated aid calculations. Pete was off by a fraction of a percent months ago in terms of where we would end up for aid. So, I think he's proud of that, and we're certainly proud of having him here to assist us with budget planning items in general. And for the most part, minus that FTE number, a lot of this helped. And our recommended levy is very close. Mill rate's a little lower in terms of where we ended up, but that is a result of where equalized property values ended up in terms of us growing. So, for the most part, I'm proud of the budget book we put together. Would have loved to be able to hit that enrollment number on the head, and we'll continue to do our best work on that on an annual basis. The, another way to kind of tease this out, we won't spend a bunch of detail on this, but we did want to give the board real numbers in terms of where we ended up with levy and mill rate. Just a few slides on ways we're going to calculate tax impact. So, we did end up getting a finalized number with net new construction. So, our school districts at 3.49% net new construction. Reminder to the board and the community, this is an important number for us. These are taxpayers that did not exist last year, property owners that did not exist last year, or property that was not taxed last year, and it's an important number. Because if we raise our levy by exactly 3.49%, the average taxpayer would have zero increase in taxes. We're recommending a slightly higher increase in terms of our levy, mainly to continue to prepay debt. And in the end, our fair market property value district line went up 9.23%. That is well above the state average as we are growing and there's still new construction, and our properties continue to hold their value and increased value on an annual basis. So, that's a big number, another increase of property value at 9.23%. We are at almost $8 billion of property value in this school district, which is pretty amazing. In the end, tonight, we're here to recommend a mill rate to the board of 10.66 and an estimated tax increase for the average property owner of about 2.5%, which is below that rate of inflation. We met with our friends from the city of Pittsburgh and the city of Verona this morning. They're putting together their city budgets in a very similar way, trying to keep taxes in check and not be way above the rate of inflation. And we've certainly done our part this year if the board endorses this budget tonight. And we only have a couple more slides to go, but I did want to kind of tease this out. So, we built this one, and I want, there's a lot here, but the levy by municipality, I'm hoping is at least recognizable and okay for the board to follow here. Really, the way we put this together, the, as a reminder, you have local assessors. Those are townships, those are, those are the city. And you might have a local assessor say, your house is worth $250,000. That's the number that's taxed to apply local taxes like city services. Then the Department of Revenue steps in and they say, whoa, 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 we can't have municipalities cooking the books on how they assess to keep taxes down for everybody. We're going to apply something called a fair market rate. So, they analyze what your property is assessed for by your municipality, how much it's going for on the open market when it sells. And if there is a difference, the municipality assessed it at 250, but on average, those houses were selling at 350, that's a signal to all of the folks at the Department of Revenue. They apply essentially an equation or a ratio to those property values and say, you're under assessed. You have to pay your fair share to the state of Wisconsin for education, and we're going to increase your fair market value if you're following. That's a big deal. It's a really big deal in the town of Verona. For the last three years, including this year, the town of Verona has seen a giant increase in fair market value. So, I want the board to be aware of that. I believe we've got a town member or two on our board as well. Mr. Porco, please note angry letters to the superintendent's office when it comes to your taxes.
Everybody's getting an angry letter.
It was out of our control. I'll help you with it when it comes to addressing it to the Department of Revenue at the Verona area school district. But what is happening in the town is that you have assessed value and there are properties, in particular, empty lot properties, and I'll let you do the math on that, that are selling way over what they're assessed for, and in comes a giant fair market adjustment. So, in general, all of our municipalities minus the town is going to see anywhere between a minus 0.5% tax increase, so a reduced tax bill up to about a 3% tax bill. So, if everyone, we're hitting the mark, we don't have any control on what's going on with the Department of Revenue. But we wanted to be 100% transparent with this. We're getting ahead of this. Pete and I went out and met with the town staff and are actually likely going to hold a town meeting that we'll participate in to explain tax bills. But there's only so much of that we can control. We can control the overall levy. Nothing you guys can do over what happens with the Department of Revenue. So, I wanted to be 100% transparent with that in terms of what that looks like. Now, we put together summary documents that, so you're essentially endorsing the budget by phone number tonight, so that all rolls up when you eventually, when you eventually go ahead and endorse the 111. And there is a more detailed document within Board Docs that more people are going to. Yep, that I think gives more deeper detail on that budget plan. And lastly, and then we're going to finish this up, we did want to do a little bit on voucher schools. I'm not going to read these slides verbatim. To give you all an idea, we haven't spent a ton of time on voucher schools in our district. This is becoming a bigger and bigger thing statewide, and we ran the numbers. We doubled the number of voucher school students our district has had in the last five years. So, it is a thing in Dane County as well. The way voucher schools work, if you guys can follow me, for this year, every student that lives in our school district heads to a voucher school. In essence, is taking with them, if they're a high schooler, $13,000 of funding. And the way that happens is that the state pays those vouchers, for those voucher students, out of the state aid pot, the big pot of money that's divvied up. There's the next slide. That now is $350 million a year of state aid that does not go to public schools. The state sends it to voucher schools. And then they send Pete a number. This year, it's like 78 students. And we're allowed to tax for those 78 students in terms of what we lose for in state aid. So, I know it's a little difficult to follow, but the aid pot goes to pay for voucher schools. We get permission from the state to increase our levy by the amount that they're paying for in voucher schools. So, in some regards, our local taxpayers are kind of paying for it twice. They're paying to fund their public school. If students go to a voucher school, they take our aid with them, and then we increase the levy to pay for the voucher school. So, it's a little bit of a double whammy, and we wanted to make sure we gave the board a little bit more detail than we have in the past, just because it's a thing. I know President Murphy even mentioned there's some statewide movement around, we pass a law that details how much money is heading to voucher schools that isn't heading to support your local public schools and even putting it as a line on our tax bills over here. We did run some summary numbers for you. So, from 2022 to this upcoming year, we've gone from 36 to 74 students. I had Pete do the math on it. He did work on this. We're just short of $900,000 in state aid loss this year that we will tax for because we're going to take that revenue limit to the max, just like most school districts. But on your mill rate, it's 11 cents on every $1,000 of property you own in this school district goes to voucher schools. And did want to make sure the board was aware of that, that that is all built into the budget we're asking for.
I think that's really important to emphasize as these numbers grow. That's over 1% of all money that we tax our residents on gets sent directly to schools that have no public accountability. It doesn't help the district at all, and that's where over 1% of your school district line item on your taxes go. And people don't really know it because they don't advertise that this is how they fund this voucher program, that by the way, people are looking to expand. So, this number could get way bigger if people don't realize what's happening.
No question. All right, as we wrap up, I do think this is a good news story coming out of the budget we just passed. We continue to take care of our taxpayers and balance a budget on an annual basis. So, we've got historically low in horn rate. We're asking for all of you to approve tonight at 10.66, down from 12.88 only four or five years ago. So, we do feel good about that with kind of the balancing act that we continue to do. So, this did fall into place for all of us. We've got a budget that now we presented to you. And again, those are just kind of some of the key points that we worked with you tonight for this presentation. So, next steps, we're going to likely in the board portion, approve the budget. We're hoping that happens. Pete will submit that finalized budget and levy to the municipalities to start working on tax bills. And then, before you know it, we'll be back coming about 26, 27. We did not want to do that tonight. Questions on anything at all? Okay, a big thank you to you guys for sticking with us. This is a, it's a full year to get this thing done. And like I said, we'll likely be back in November to make a fresh pot of chili for the 26, 27 budget. That's the way it goes.
And I will bring up one point too, is our records go back to 1984, and mill rate has never been this low. All of those 41 years, we've never seen that. Lowest mill rate in 41 years.
Right, I'm just, I mean, as you.
As far back as my records go. Could be much for at least 41.
This whole presentation, I think, just summarizes that point of all the moving parts and all the things that fall into our budget and the things we can control and the things we can't control, that trying to have that mill rate reflect as much as possible, respect for the taxpayers that are feeling impacts beyond us. So, I appreciate that that stays a goal of our team and this board to try to not yo-yo and to try to really respect the fact that there's a lot of things that are increasing, and we're going to do our best to decrease.
Well, thank you all.
It's like we're on to results policy.
Lots of science. Warm it up.
Board members, again, do you have any sentiment about taking the vote right now? Before we, I mean, yeah, just, yeah, feeling that energy. And again, I've not made any changes to the fact that we don't have any public comments. So, let me just get to, okay. So, we'll be taking two votes. So, the first would be please a motion to approve the 25, 26 budget as presented. Thank you, Juan Carlos. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Corby. All those in favor of approving the 25, 26 budget as presented, signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The budget has been approved. And then, voting to certify the 25, 26 tax levy at the dollar amount listed, which I will read shortly, as I would accept a motion to certify that the 25, 26 tax levy will be $83,225,538 as proposed. Thank you, Joe. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Christopher. All those in favor of certifying the 25, 26 tax levy as printed, as proposed, signify with aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thanks again, Chad, Pete, all the team. Now, we're ready for results. We're just kind of clearing the intellectual slate as we go, and thank you, Amy, for joining us.
Well, I don't have nearly as many numbers as Chad and Pete had to do tonight. Just a whole lot of interpretations and definitions. So, if you'll remember back in July, our board adapted new results policies. We went from four results policies to six results policies after much discussion about how to better communicate the progress that we're making in our specific goals. With that then, we needed to make some adjustments to our monitoring reports and how we approached the interpretations and the definitions specifically for our team to come back and be able to communicate about those results to the board and the larger community. And so, we're coming tonight with those updates.
We need to redo that budget. Not redo it, there was a.
Did I erroneously say something?
Yeah, there was one abstention.
Oh, there was? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think we progressive voice did abstention.
We did.
We can circle back to it when there's a couple more members present.
Okay.
Keep the votes. It just changes on the record. Here's two.
That Joe will be an abstention.
No.
Corby, thank you. You're looking right at me, and I'm looking at Joe for some reason. Okay, thank you.
Because he seconded it, let's, we'll circle that.
We'll just re, okay. And that was the vote for the budget? Okay, okay. Thank you.
Sorry.
All good?
Thank you, Amy.
Can I get the numbers right? Probably understand. Okay, so just a reminder, we had results policies two and three, which are our core academics and exploration academics. We actually already had language in our previous results policies, already had definitions and interpretations. So, really with those two policies, we utilized that language previously, and we just updated the formatting to better reflect that checklist that we worked through with the board last spring. For results policies four through six, so special academics, then through special education, advanced learning, terms of special programming and student discipline, as well as journey of a lifelong learner and the strategic framework, we did not have language in policy for that. And so, the team, the student economic services team has worked to draft that language, specifically the language around the board expects and the board values, and then presented new interpretations of terms and definitions. Our goals in doing so were to mirror the language that already existed in other documents. So, in the strategic framework, we define collaboration. So, we're using that definition for collaboration through each of these results policies as well. So, that was kind of how we approached this work of building those new monitoring reports. As a reminder, each monitoring report has a statement about the board, what the board values, and then what the board expects as a result of that policy. There's a section for interpretation of terms, and the interpretation of terms is really an explanation of those terms as it relates to the language of the content of the policy. So, for example, growth might be defined differently in special education versus in advanced learning. And so, we've included that in terms of interpretation of terms. We also have a section for the education terms or definitions. These might be acronyms or commonly used terms in education. They're not defined relative to that specific policy, but might be pertinent to the content. So, just as an example, a sample monitoring report here, this is 4.2, which would be about special education. You can see at the very top is the question that the board approved and passed with the results policy back in July. To what extent are we meeting the needs of students with identified needs to ensure access, growth and belonging? And you see the two statements for the Board of Education is committed to equity. That's the value statement. The board is valuing equity, collaboration, students' decision-making, et cetera. And then the board's expectation that all students with disabilities have access to comprehensive continuum of services, et cetera. Below that, then you see the interpretation of terms, so some of the terms that are used above and how those relate to that context. And then finally, at the bottom, the definition of terms, so just some educational terms here like least restrictive environment and inclusive practices. So, each of the monitoring reports that you have tonight are laid out in this very specific way with your question at the top, the value and expectation statements, interpretation and definitions. That's what the team's been working on. We wanted to bring that forward tonight, knowing that you'll have a vote to approve the monitoring reports with this language. And then our team will begin. We have our first monitoring report, it's November 17. So, I'll pause there for any, any questions.
So, I just have a procedural question. I'm sorry. We don't have to do like a first or a second read for these?
No. Yep, because this is just approving for reasonableness, the new interpretations that have been listed here.
I would say in reading through them, this makes sense for me, that it seems measurable, that it seems like we are evaluating appropriately the questions being asked versus this amorphous kind of idea. So, this feels much more tangible. So, good work on the drafts.
It's been really good for the team to really digest and think through what are we actually, what does this actually mean? And the questions that the board has provided allow us to think more deeply about that as well as make connections to build coherence across different ideas and back to some of our key documents with our teaching and learning framework, strategic framework, et cetera. So, thank you for that opportunity.
I also appreciate just, you know, board members, if you've noticed, like, the structure of the summary has also shifted to incorporate journey of a lifelong learner and our strategic framework. And so, then, you know, we kind of dialogue a little bit about then what it means to actually monitor our five and our six, if they are sort of embedded across all the other results policies. So, I think that integration is really useful. I know tonight, we're focused on being able to approve the interpretations, but I do think as we move forward then to potentially monitor at an upcoming meeting with this way, I think we shared in our leadership discussion that filling in all the boxes need not be necessary. So, this integration of trying to overlay journey of a lifelong. So this integration of trying to overlay journey of a lifelong learner, strategic framework, I don't think that means there has to be something robust in every single results policy for every single thing. But having that crosswalk, I think, really just elevates that those things that we are using to really drive the work of the district are thoroughly embedded, and then everything we do and discuss at the board table as well with our results. So just, you know, that overall, right, structure of these documents has shifted to reflect that, too, which I would think is great. So I don't know if board members have, as you're mulling over, any specific feedback areas that did surface as you read through any interpretations. Obviously, there were quite a handful of them. You know, we've kind of shared general sentiments, but is there any specific feedback on any interpretation that is worth elevating? I know I had one that I grabbed for the curiosity. So, okay. Our three, creative and performing arts, 3.1. And I was going to caution board members to avoid the obsessive wordsmithing, because that really isn't the intention of this. However, it says with the Board of Education expects, expects all students will access creative and performing arts. And I don't know if that's really, right, that's an impossible thing. We've talked about that when we weighed all of these results policies, where we have students interested in various factors, you know, different components of what we can do at the high school. So I feel like we want to ensure everyone has access, but then those that opt in are engaging to the depth that they desire within that pathway. So I think my, yeah, my caution was that the expectation of all students to do that pathway, I don't think is what we're looking for. So that would be one piece of feedback I have.
Thanks, John. We can certainly make that change in language.
Okay.
Because we certainly have gotten rid of, as I said, with our two and our three, we took most of those interpretations from the previous results policies, and so this language existed there. We get rid of the indicators, but I see what you're saying.
Yeah, and I think that was the only one, because once I noticed that, I kind of looked at the others to just see if that kind of carried over anywhere else. I don't think it did.
So if we change that language to have access, because all students will have access?
Yes. I think that would work. And I just had one general comment about personalized goals carrying through. I think we've talked kind of multiple times about just if that's an antiquated way of talking about what we're doing in the district, if that's kind of a definition that we still want or a term. I'm still in the creative and performing arts, but the personalized goal as a term that's being used is still in there, but I don't know that we, I mean, if it lives there, great. I just, I don't know how much we use that kind of terminology, or am I just missing something that really does live within the work of staff and instructional leaders?
We could perhaps take that out, because it is not named as a specific piece to an indicator anymore.
Right? I mean, because we even talked about that way back when we first did our policies originally, that we had hesitation around that. So I don't know if that just kind of muddies, and I think that lives in quite a few of them. So maybe that is my suggestion, is to just take that term out.
It doesn't live in the interpretation.
Right. Yeah, and it's not in the policy. So I think wherever that may be listed, could just be removed. I think those are the only things I had noticed. Any other board members? I know, again, thank you all for your time. I'm kind of looking through the general sentiment.
I had a question, because this is going to come up in like an update session in a couple of weeks. Under 4.3, advanced learning, the definition of domains of giftedness, because I know members of the community are going to have questions about this. Are, so I guess my question is, this is what DPI has identified as domains of giftedness? And I just want to understand if the school district has any, I guess, has the ability to go beyond these domains of giftedness, or would we have to stick to what DPI has set as the domains of giftedness? I mean, this is part of the reader update in a couple of weeks.
Yeah, so those domains of giftedness come from-
That makes sense, yeah.
Yeah, they come from NAGC, which is the National Association for Gifted Children, and then that's kind of baked within the state statute. Certainly, we can build upon that, right, within us meeting our requirements by the state, but then thinking more broadly about what does programming for gifted and talented or for advanced learners look like. Those domains become the buckets that are pretty nationally recognized, but we certainly can think more broadly about that based on the needs of our students and our community.
Right. Because my understanding was that you guys were kind of thinking more broadly around, I guess, gifted and talented or domains of giftedness.
I think I-
So I just understand, I just wanted to understand how that was going to be reflected.
Our priority of, you know, we want to make sure that first and foremost, we're within compliance of both state law and for national standards. So that is our starting point as we continue to, now, we don't understand the compliance, if there is their ability to continue to answer programming. Yes, but I think just in terms of the core, what does it mean on a national level and based on state law, we want to put this, because this is what would be kind of by, attached to the board policy itself, make sure we had that basic set. But it doesn't mean, doesn't limit you from thinking beyond that, but you wanted that those base parameters and-
Sure, you want to check the box on compliance, but I just wanted to make sure, kind of understand, does this go greater for conversation purposes?
Yeah.
Right? Because it's great to have that, you know, whatever's required by DPI, and we're good there, but more thinking about the public, any questions from anybody around the program, how it works, that would be important to have context around that.
Some things for that, no problem.
Because not everybody tuning in is going to be kind of in tune with, oh, this is being done because of DPI.
Correct.
Check these boxes for compliance. Just concerned, they want to know, what does this actually mean to me and this student, my student?
Most definitely. I think that's where the questions at the board's also posed, to what extent are students accessing opportunities for accelerated learning? Is a place that we can continue to lean into that and make some of those broader connections back to the strategic framework and journey of a lifelong learner. Because the journey of a lifelong learner also supports personal growth, collaboration, some of those other skills that really overlap well with some of the domains that are identified.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. So I've got your two ideas, one about changing the language of will have access, and then getting rid of personalized goals in the interpretations. Any other notes?
We own the question, right? I guess the results policy itself, to, for example, to what extent students accessing-
Yes, those are the results policies we voted on how are any on-
Sis go now?
Yes, as a rewrite of our results policies. Yep.
Okay. So if you have any questions about those questions, it wouldn't be here to discuss.
Right, because those are ours.
We need to workshop those.
Yeah, those are ours.
So I had some questions about that. None of us.
Okay. Any final thoughts or comments from any of the board members? Get to put one into living practice then in a couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the team to work on these. I think this will be really just an exciting way of-
We will be tuning in to the board.
We will be voting on this, yes. So do we want to close that out, too? We'll just keep doing our little dance and a board action? Okay. So we've received our interpretations from the team based on our reworking of our results So then the motion would be to approve the results policies interpretations and definitions as reasonable as presented. Is there a motion? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Juan Carlos. All those in favor of approving the results policies interpretations and definitions as presented signify with aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? I realize I ought to just be asking that all the time, but most of our votes do not require that level of detail, so thank you. All right, so policies, interpretations, definitions have been approved.
So we can do that, so.
Yeah, do you want us to go right back to 7B then, since we just did a vote? Okay, so let's do a revote on the budget. Is, yeah, go ahead, please, Nate.
A motion to rescind the vote on item 7B and immediately revote, and then also have the minutes reflect only is now revoked because of, well, it's a-
So we're doing a full motion and second and vote to rescind?
Yeah, let's do a motion to rescind the vote on item 7B and immediately vote again to allow a board member to abstain who originally intended to abstain, and have the minutes reflect just this second.
Okay, so I'm going to do this in the order I think I heard. Is there a motion to rescind the first vote that was taken on the 25, 26 budget?
So move.
Thank you, Joe. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, John. All those in favor of voting to approve to rescind the initial vote on the 25, 26 budget, signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? I don't have to abstain, no abstentions are needed for that. Okay. Then we're going to vote to, do we have to vote about the minutes, or I'm just making that declaration?
So I would now need to revote on the budget item, and then vote for the minutes.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion to approve the 25, 26 budget as was previously presented?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Christopher. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Joe. All those in favor of approving the 25, 26 budget as previously presented signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, Corby. Corby will be abstaining from the vote. So the motion is passed, and I would like to make a motion that the minutes be amended to simply reflect the second vote that was taken this evening for the accurate vote on the 25, 26 budget. Is there a motion to approve that proposal?
Yes.
Thank you, John. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Christopher. All those in favor of approving that the minutes be adjusted to reflect the second vote only for the minutes of the meeting, signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Hey, thanks. That was really fun. Robert's Rules 101 for your, your long, okay, great. So I think we've wrapped up, tidied up, nice things, to now serve it over to Marcy, it looks like, to discuss calendars, 26, 27, and 27, 28.
That's right.
All come, Marcy.
Your buddy.
And thank you, Nate.
The calendar development process, so every two years, we engage in a process to come up with our calendars for the ensuing two years. And we do that by gathering input from families and staff and principals, and we want to take that input into consideration as we're developing our calendars, along with all of the other factors that come into play. There are many. We shared them with you here, and it's designing a school calendar is like solving a very large puzzle. We have to meet our state instructional minimum requirements, maintain but not exceed contractual workdays, and transportation, and all the things we talk about all year long. And as we think about our calendar supports and how we look to support student outcomes and staff growth, we want to again thank the community for the professional learning communities that we have available to our staff on our late start Mondays. And we are seeing what we intended and hoped to see as a result of those professional learning communities and other systems that have been put into place. Our state assessment data, which we'll be getting into much more deeply in other presentations, not the purpose of this presentation, but just a teaser, that we're showing grade year to year achievement gains in math and language arts. We're showing growth gains in math and strong positive change over the four years for achievement in our focus groups. Stay tuned for more on that. As usual, one of the things we like to do to try to give input from our groups that are most important to us, our families and our staff, are give an opportunity for them to complete a survey. We had great response this year. We had 1,161 families respond and 457 staff respond. And then to just quickly go over our calendars, we asked them about October break. We have two days coming up at the end of this week. Asked about that for the future, families and staff both really value those two days off in October. When we talk about looking for more professional development days, some districts have gone to having one of those days as a professional development day, and then one day off for staff. Our survey feedback is telling us that is not a preference that our staff have. And then we asked about spring break timing. This was interesting. In the past, we've asked about, would you prefer this week or that week? And this year, we also asked about aligning with other school districts and universities. And for both staff and families, we got quite a bit of feedback that that's important to them, to the extent that we can do that, especially mentioned we're MMSDU, Oregon, and Mont Corv, and UW Madison, which of course presents a little bit of a challenge, because we're not necessarily on the same calendar cycles as other districts. But we know that UW Madison does their calendar for five years, so perhaps there's some potential there, but it was interesting to learn how important this is for our families.
I'd be curious, as I'm thinking about this again, you know, with that particular framing of that question, because I think people, at least just living in both worlds a lot, you know, the university also ends mid-May, so their spring break is often much earlier in March, because they're done a month, you know, three to four weeks before we are. And so I think that also, I've had that dialogue with staff and families, do you want like an earlier spring break or a later spring break? Just sort of the emotional piece behind that about how much school lives after spring break, I think is also, so I don't know if that type of question, or if you get feedback kind of in that sort of vein. Because aligning with UW has always given me caution, especially when I was teaching, that that felt so early, I think, in some ways.
Right, that's a good point. Yeah, people, there were comments sort of around those three weeks, like, we want to go earlier, we want to go later, and then also comments around, well, don't align us with others, because then there's fewer people traveling, right?
Right.
So you always get to know a little bit of everything, but it was predominantly, you know, the value in aligning with other districts, because people may work here, but they live in another district, so their children are in school in other districts.
I think this question also could use the preface that the calendar, we will never make everyone happy.
Exactly, yes.
So that ought to be kind of the general lead-in, is that it's an impossible task to really-
Right, and our big puzzle that we put together, we're, yes, we have lots of constraints. And then we asked folks about coming back to school in 2028. Couple of years ago, or maybe it was last year, January 1st fell on a weekend, so then some people were surprised that we came back right away on January 2nd. So we wanted to get feedback from people about when they would prefer their kids to come back, and it's kind of funny, because you see the families say, yep, they can go back, and the staff say they can stay home. So it was interesting, but like you said, it's, we can't necessarily meet everyone's desires with our calendar, but we try to do our best. Now just quickly go over some of the open-ended responses for the 27, 28 calendar, I'm sorry. We had got the most feedback from families about late start Mondays, the length of winter break, and when the school year starts and ends. And we did have people mention support for late start Mondays, but we also had people raise concerns about scheduling childcare and things like that. And we also had people speak up about school year start and end times, alignment with other districts, again, came up in the open-ended comments, and then really valuing that October break, the two-day break, and having a February day off, February Wellness Day. And then for our staff, they appreciate short and well spaced breaks, the wanting to be, us to be aware of those really long stretches where we might not have days off, and then, again, appreciating the professional learning opportunities that they have. We did have some staff questioning the effectiveness of late start Mondays. And then again, among staff, the importance of aligning breaks with other districts came up as well. So what we really noticed and preserved in our calendars, our draft calendars and calendars that we've developed, are those two days in October and Wellness Day in February, so that people can have those breaks that they have come to value. Late start Mondays, which we're very appreciative of, are still in the plans, but we do recognize that people have different thoughts and questions about late start Mondays. We did try to work with principals to try to find another professional development day, but when we have all these tensions kind of coming against each other and getting that clear message from our families and our staff about those days off with no school for staff or students, we went to preserving that for our foreseeable future for our calendars. So our next steps will be just continuing to- So our next steps will be just continuing to tie up the calendar plans, get them finalized, communicate them out to families and staff before winter break. We have a couple of different ways that we do that. We put it in our newsletter, a couple of different places on our website, make sure that principals have the information in a couple of different ways so that folks can start planning for those two days off in the coming year's Octobers. So happy to take any questions that you might have.
I missed that part, and I don't think I kept up. What piece are you going to continue including?
Late start Mondays.
Oh, good.
Yes. And the two days off in October and a February Wellness Day.
So those are locked in, but then everything else, you're still kind of mulling over.
Yeah. Itch.
Once you do that, there is no really, not a lot of molding. There's not a lot of molding once that takes place. And so we really, just just to answer the way, we have to think about, what do we value and prioritize in a grown-up school district? I have the board and the community expect two major things, and it is our honor to be able to be committed to that. That is taking care of the wellness and well-being of our staff that do such an amazing job with our Susan Alph and me, is making sure that we have incremental times in our calendar that allows for staff to be refreshed, to be able to do their best work. There's also a high priority from our board and our community on accelerated high level of academic performance. And then, and the reason we are committed to, because there is a clear, if you think about us implementing and putting late start Mondays in place for deep collaborative time for professional learning communities and our acceleration of student outcomes, that's not coincidence. That's deep planning, incremental steps of putting in new curriculum, allowing our phenomenal teachers to be able to work collaboratively together and learn best practices from one another and elevate student work in those spaces. And so, and I love the way you framed the question. So when you think about why we prioritize those areas and things that we should, that is not negotiable, those two key factors are really lead to it, which only leaves, if you think about the instructional minutes that are must for DPI standards, leaves you about a day and a half to work with. And so now what do you do with those that other day or two? Plus calculating snow days and hoping for the best, you know, that, you know, we don't have a snowpocalypse one day that throws everything off.
If that did happen, do we just extend the school year deeper?
No, we have learned the value of virtual learning.
Yeah.
And we are already overly maxed in elementary minutes anyway, so...
So similar to middle school?
Yeah, secondary, secondary virtual learning.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's great. I saw in the open-ended comments that there were a few references to people wanting school to start earlier in August. And I just, right, it's my understanding that we're prohibited by law from starting before September 1st. And so those comments just made me think, maybe that's something we need to just, in settings like this, do a better job of communicating, that that's one of those brick walls that we're up against. We can't start earlier, and we have a certain number of minutes we have to meet. And, you know, all those other factors that we've been talking about is why there's not a ton of wiggle room to write with.
And a lot of these, I mean, there's such a even split for a lot of these questions. It's impossible to make everybody happy, so thank you for putting this together.
Yeah, and for asking the questions. I mean, just being able to see the data, to have something tangible, and to really show that it's being contemplated and utilized and reflected upon, I think is really important.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for the updates.
Thanks, Marcy.
All right, so completing officially the superintendent's report, just ensuring one more time, I don't believe there's any public comment that has landed that I was unaware of. So just...
You need about 95 minutes of the report.
But we went into board action, we had like Robert's Rules disasters that I got to... I mean, so it's been a thorough evening beyond just, yeah. Lots of discussion. So just revisiting again, just to follow the agenda, we did go in and out of board action. So I believe we have accomplished all of the four board action items that are on the agenda. So then we'll move on to board updates. Any updates from any one of you all this evening?
I'm still awesome.
I mean, right, swear, a badge. We had the consortium gathering, was that just last week?
Yeah.
That was a week ago?
Yeah.
Feels like a long time ago. Yeah, so we gathered in MMSD with fellow colleagues from the Greater Dane County area, talking about plans, goals for the group, continued advocacy at the state level regarding finances. Yeah, it was a great time to share some space and collaborate. Do you want to add anything about the evening?
I thought we made some progress. We actually have plenty to meet tomorrow or next day. We do.
Okay, great.
I got it, I got it covered. In terms of what are our priority areas for advocacy would be this year, I think what we've learned collectively is that when we're all focused in one or two items and not scattered across Dane County or across the state, that our impact is far more significant. And, you know, doing that again this year, I saw that while we didn't get the exact number that we were shooting for, we did see increases in special education funding and to control. So that's because there was a mutual voice, no matter where you went in this space. So doing that again, you're looking at, again, investing in education in line with CPI as minimal, continuing to have deep discussions around, like this board just did today, around transparency in tax bills and where money is going. And then where's our space at the, as the capital in terms of appropriate lobbying for funding for public education? As we know, that is, continues to be the greatest resource that allows for equity across, across our nation.
And just as I note, the organization, the consortium, is the Greater Dane County, and I think that is expanding. So we do have districts from around the state that are interested in having, just reflecting, especially when it comes to state finance, that that really impacts all districts equally, that this isn't kind of a Dane County versus. This is really looking collectively, have what focus areas really benefit all districts in the state. Any other updates?
Just quickly, I was honored to be able to go to the celebration for our fellow board member, Brother Corby Wright, who received the aspiring presidential, aspiring leader presidential award from the Urban League of Dane County, a monument, just a phenomenal event, but one of four award winners on the night. And it was just great to see representation from the grown-up school district on the stage, but it took them probably seven minutes to talk about all the stuff that he's done, just to get him onto the stage. But, you know, it's great, great kudos, and thank you for continuing to be a part of this board and you continue to work across the, across the state. And that was a well, well-deserved honor that you really...
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for coming, and I do give a shout-out, as you know, to the best school district.
Absolutely.
In Wisconsin.
Thank you for sharing your talents with the board, all the things that you do, that all the members of this board do, be on this table. Just elevates so much the work that we can do here, so thank you. Congratulations. One other update, board members, about convention, the Wasbe Convention in January. If you know for sure you're going and you know for sure you need lodging, please let Lori know by October 30th because lodging will fill up, registration will open. So if you can let her know soon. If you're unsure, reservations can still be made, obviously. I know you just might not be as close by potentially. You might have to hoof it a few blocks in who knows what weather we'll have in January. But if you know for sure, if you could please let Lori know so she can take care of getting those reservations started as soon as that registration window opens, October 30th. Okay.
If you're able to attend, we did receive the superintendent advisory that was accepted as a presentation at the state convention to be able to elevate the work of two-way communication through advisories. If you were able to attend and be part of that session, it's called Listening as Leadership, and it's at 1:30 on Wednesday, January 21st. And that'll be in room 102. It'll be part of the program. But if you're thinking about traveling, be in there, be in there at a certain time, Wednesday, the 21st, 1:30.
And fellow board members, so you know, last year, we did a collective workshop about governance with Sun Prairie and Middleton. And there was such positive feedback and interest from other districts that I'm now going to be collaborating with a leader from Eau Claire, Dr. Clarity, and hopefully it gets some folks from Sun Prairie to do a full pre-conference session, which is 1:30 to 5:00 on the Tuesday before everything kicks off Wednesday. So I will be there doing that. So I would love any thoughts, if you're interested in just being a part of the planning or conversations or any of that, let me know. All right, any other updates from any board members? Okay, moving on to superintendent's consent agenda, please make sure you've looked over the consent agenda. Are there any questions? My favorite rhetorical part of the evening, hearing none. The superintendent's consent agenda is approved as presented, and board consent agenda, any questions? Hearing none, the board's consent agenda is also approved. Moving on, the future dates are listed here before I jump ahead. Right now, just listed as all regular board meetings with the reminder that the two meetings in November, we're going to start at 5:30 with workshop, where we're going to have Shayna Lewis here to support us, where on November 3rd, we'll be talking about expulsion hearings. And November 17th will be kind of legal board 101-type things, revisiting kind of just the legal obligations that we have as serving as board members. And we'll start our regular board meeting immediately following that workshop time. Okay, great. And then, oh, moving on to a board workshop. And this one, we ought to be fairly straightforward and short. Joe, I might turn it over to you just because you were so kind as to give us the draft language. But we just, anything you want to add before I jump in?
Yeah, so this, right, this is about just having a policy that sets what happens if there's a vacancy. We have a policy about vacancy in...